Check one, two.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Administrator, for making sure that all systems were in place before we convene this public hearing of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. Mr. Co-Chair, any initial comments? Okay, well, with that, we will begin with the first speaker on our list, Jane Baird. Morning. Please turn your microphone on.
There we go.
There we go. Senator Fonfera, Representative Horn, members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Jane Baird. I'm Senior Director of Government Relations and External Affairs at Connecticut Children's. I'm here today to share our support for Senate Bill 1550, an act concerning the applicability of the hospital tax to children's general hospitals. And just to note, I'll be speaking to testimony that our President and CEO Jim Schmerling submitted. Currently, Connecticut Children's is statutorily exempt from the provider tax, but we believe that our future participation would benefit the state and support our organizational financial sustainability. As our state's only independent children's health system, Connecticut Children's has a unique relationship to Medicaid. More than half of our patients rely on Medicaid, and the percentage of our costs that are covered by Medicaid payments, which is sometimes referred to as Medicaid cost coverage, is unsustainably low. The two most recent reports of the financial status of Connecticut's short-term acute care hospitals, which is published annually by the Office for Health Strategy, clearly delineate that Connecticut Children's Medicaid cost coverage falls below that of adult hospitals. This trend is untenable, and as a result, we struggle with the financial impact of Medicaid. We are continuing to work with policymakers in pursuit of a solution to our Medicaid challenges, and we believe that part of that solution involves the state's hospital tax. Connecticut Children's is seeking to remove the current statutory exemption from the tax to enable our participation beginning in fiscal year 2027. We recognize that our participation should benefit the state by leveraging additional federal Medicaid revenue, and it will align Connecticut's tax with the rest of the country, since in most states, mostly typically include their children's hospitals as part of their hospital tax programs. Allowing Connecticut Children's to participate in the hospital tax should better help address our Medicaid cost coverage challenges and therefore help support our mission of providing accessible and high-quality pediatric healthcare for children and families. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for being here today. I note that not only is, as we all know, the hospital tax a subject of negotiation being the hospitals and the governor at the moment, but that also there is significant question about change at the federal level to the whole system itself. So I mean, if you had any comment on that, feel free. Otherwise, I will, you know, suggest we will certainly stay in touch with you as we watch that system, see what happens.
Yeah, I think we're all watching what's going on at the federal level, and obviously, I'm not in a position to predict that, but I can tell you that not participating in our tax currently makes us an outlier. Through the Children's Hospital Association, we're aware that most children's hospitals do participate in their hospital's tax and, you know, reflect the same Medicaid demographics that we have with the majority of our patients relying on the program. So we believe it's, it would be a benefit to the state and to Connecticut Children's to participate.
Do you know why Connecticut Children's was excluded from participation?
So it's a great question. When that exemption was put into statute predates my time at Connecticut Children's, but I believe there was something about the way the logistics worked that had us paying into the system but not getting benefit out of it. I can't speak to the specifics, but I can tell you that it is, there's significant precedent across the country for children's hospitals participating, so we would, we are interested in moving in that direction now.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Co-Chair?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you again. Why now versus, I mean, this is an issue that Medicaid rates have been low for a long time now. Why the hospital was choosing now versus previously?
Sure, thank you for the question. I think a lot of it has to do with the timing of the settlement. As you know, there's been a multi-year settlement in place between the hospitals that do participate and the administration. That hospital settlement will expire at the end of fiscal year 26. So with the terms of the settlement, we didn't feel like there was an opportunity to join the tax, but now that that is coming to an end and the parameters for what the tax will look like going forward, starting in fiscal '27, are being worked out. So I think that this seemed like the right time to pursue that change.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Fazio, online.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your testimony, ma'am. We heard, I think, testimony against the governor's proposal to increase the hospital tax from the hospital association a couple of weeks ago. I'm assuming your analysis of joining the system would be that you will get more in payments back from the government than you would be paying out in hospital tax? And I assume that that means that, in contrast, the hospital associations worry that the increase in the tax would, would simply, the change in the tax would simply outpace the improvement in their reimbursement. I'm just hoping you can kind of comment on that, that analysis, or give your own.
Sure, thanks for the question. It is our expectation that there would be financial benefit to Connecticut Children's to participate, because when you look at our Medicaid patient profile, more than half of the children we take care of rely on the program, which is significantly more than other hospitals. I don't know at this, at this time, and I can't speculate what that benefit might be, because until the parameters of how the tax would work are finalized, we can't really do a projection. But based upon our experience at the national level and with our fellow children's hospitals, representatives from around the country, our expectation would be that it would benefit us. So that's why we're seeking to enter at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Representative Clarissa Tietzger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here today. And just for clarification, I know the goal is to leverage more federal dollars than obviously zero you're getting now, but is, how about your concern aligning with the concern of the hospitals with the Medicaid reimbursement rate and the OHS study that came out saying that the hospitals are really getting more than they thought they were, but I don't agree with them.
Sure, thanks for the question. You know, I think Connecticut Children's, we have a longstanding, you know, a deep relationship with Medicaid, because so many of our patients rely on the program. It does pose financial challenges for us, and we did review with interest the Medicaid rate study. I believe that, that yes, our participation in the tax would leverage some additional federal revenue that the state is not currently receiving, that we would likely benefit in terms of getting more out of it than we pay into it. I don't think we're under the expectation that that would resolve all of our financial challenges with Medicaid, because they are, because they are many, but I think our perspective is that this is part of the solution, so we would like to remove the exemption so that we can move forward with that as part of the mix.
Great, I appreciate that explanation, and hopefully, when we go through negotiations again, the state will not do what they did to the hospitals the first time around, but I appreciate you being here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Representative Yacarino.
Real quick, thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, the exemption now, you have the exemption now, going forward, do you have a general idea what the tax would be for the hospitals, for your hospitals?
I don't, I don't think I can speculate at this time, because the settlement, which currently governs how the tax runs, runs through June 30th of 2026, and so not knowing what the specific parameters of the tax in terms of what the tax rates would be and sort of how all of that would be calculated, I think it would be premature to speculate, but our expectation is that it would be beneficial to us to some extent, and then we'd have to see how that benefit plays out and how that then lines up with, you know, the rest of our experience with Medicaid.
I appreciate that. I was trying to see a number, and I guess you really can't quantify it.
Yeah, I think with that, without knowing the specifics, it's really hard to speculate at this point in time.
All right, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Senator Martin, online.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jane, thank you for testifying. I only heard part of it, but I just wanted to know, so your look are clarified, that you are looking to get into the hospital pool, is that correct?
Correct.
Why were you left out to begin with?
Um, yeah, it's a, it's a great question, and I'm not sure I can fully answer, answer that. The, the point at which the statutory exemption was put in place predates my time at Connecticut Children's. I understand generally that there was, the way this system operated had us paying into the tax without getting any benefit out of it, so I can't speak to exactly what, what those parameters were or why, but, but it does make us an outlier nationally, and so we're seeking to remove that exemption now.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because my, my understanding of how all this started was the hospital system came to us with this concept, and then, you know, the idea was that each of the hospitals would, you know, they, they pay a tax of a dollar, but the federal government would reimburse, and I, don't hold me to this, but like two to one or something like that. And then slowly, through the years, the state of Connecticut tapped into some of that revenue, and, you know, they kept some of it rather than giving it to the hospitals. So, and here today, you know, we still, there is a participation from the hospitals through the tax. They do get some federal monies because of that. But I'm just curious if you're, if you are the only, only one that has been excluded from the pool?
Um, I believe that the Yukon Health Center is also exempted from, from the tax, but it does, nationally, it, it is much more common for children's hospitals to be included in, in the tax, so I think going forward, that's, that's why we're seeking the change at this time.
So Jane, would that mean that if for every dollar that you put in, and I don't know what the formula is currently with how much the hospitals that are in the pool right now, how much they get reimbursed? So I'm assuming that that's not a fixed amount? So if your dollars go in, that that pool of money that they're receiving from the federal government will also increase?
Um, I, I would expect that with our participation, that state of Connecticut would be leveraging additional federal Medicaid revenue, so I believe that that would be more money in the pool, but the way the tax currently operates is dictated by the lawsuit settlement that's in place, and it doesn't expire until June 30th of next year. So I can't speak to exactly what the parameters are, because I don't think they're, they're set yet for how it would operate in fiscal '27. So I'm not sure I can, I can give you an answer on exactly how much additional money that would be. It would depend upon how that gets sorted out when.
Madam Chair, okay, thank you, Jane. Madam Chair, perhaps we can get our LOR to provide us some information if they do participate, what, how that would impact the rest of the hospitals and the state as well?
Certainly, we can ask that question. As we noted at the outset, this, all of this is under substantial flux, both because of the negotiations going on between governor and the hospitals, and because of significant changes being proposed at the federal level that may eliminate this entire plan.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Any further questions? Oh, Representative Palata.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Jane, for being here. Brief question, so, and listening to the debate, would adding Connecticut Children's into this pool, would that affect any services? Would, would it exclude you from providing any services? Would you be able to expand your services? So if you're now paying this tax, would that change in any way the, what services are offered to who in the state?
Um, I, I mean, in and of itself, participation in the tax, I don't think has an impact on what services we can or can't provide, but part of our rationale.
Yeah. Lot of stuff going on here, huh?
Well. Henry.
Um, part of our rationale for, for wanting to join the tax is because we do have financial challenges with Medicaid, since more than half of the children we take care of rely on Medicaid. It does constrain our ability to, to grow and expand, so I, I think anything that we can do to improve the Medicaid cost coverage that Connecticut Children's receives could have a positive impact on our ability to meet the care demands of our patient population, so.
Thank you. That was a crux of my question, was perhaps, you know, in, in your paying into it, maybe you can offer more services or expand on the services? So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Any further questions? Seeing none, thanks for kicking us off today. Uh, next up, we have Joby Moss and Will Herschel.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
All right. Uh, my name is Joby Moss. I'm a Director of Business Development at Verage, and I'm here to give Verage's comments on House Bill 7266 and Act Establishing a Uniform Solar Capacity Tax. Thank you for hearing our comments. Verage is a solar developer. We develop, design, finance, and construct solar projects here in Connecticut and across the country. Our business is based in West Hartford, and the majority of our employees are also located in Connecticut. Further, whenever possible, we generally pursue project development here in the state of Connecticut, and every project we develop creates, creates business for a large category of Connecticut companies, from engineers to attorneys to bankers, all the way down to electricians and labors. On top of that, the projects we develop create, excuse me, reduce utility cost, reduce carbon emissions, and add to in-state power generation capacity. Verage opposes, unless amended, House Bill 7266, and the reasons for this are, well, first of all, we generally support the creation of a uniform capacity tax, but just not exactly as this bill is written. Verage opposes the application of this uniform capacity tax to projects retroactively, which have already reached a certain stage of development or commercial operation, and have therefore completed financing, and cannot and should not be subject to a new tax that was not previously considered or previously applicable. Any project owners would have their expenses increased quite dramatically and therefore savings meaningfully reduced. Many projects that did not originally consider this tax, because it was not, simply not in existence, would be subject to default and foreclosure. Many projects have already entered into tax stabilization agreements or pilot agreements with host municipalities, and we believe that these agreements that, again, were already in existence should not be disturbed, and generally speaking, retroactive taxation is contrary to good public policy for, you know, well-determined reasons. We suggest that the, that the proposed bill should be amended as follows. First, the definition of the, of a solar photovoltaic system should have a clause inserted that specifies that the tax is not applicable to any projects.
Please summarize.
Before October 1st, 2025, we oppose the application of a 2% annual escalator on the base rate, and we request that the uniform capacity tax be in place for a term of 20 years. Lastly, we support the OPM written testimony that was filed today and the three recommendations contained therein. That is all our comments, thank you.
Thank you. If I could, so I, first of all, I want to make sure that your suggestions for this, the particular points, the retroactivity, the escalator clause, and the term of operation, is that in your written testimony?
It is, yes.
Great. And if hypothetically, if we were to convene a group to, to discuss the, you know, the parameters of this, do you have any suggestions as to who, you know, should be included in those conversations?
Specifically from Verage or in general?
In general. Any perspectives that you want to make sure that we consider when we look at this?
Uh, again, we think that the OPM had a good testimony that was filed today, so we think they should be include, included. Deep, of course, Verage, of course, would like to be included. Either myself or our CEO, Will Herschel, could be present, and then the Connecticut Solar and Storage Association would likely also be a good participant in these conversations.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Rodney Moore.
Your, can anyone hear me?
Rodney Moore?
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Oh, yes, sorry, I was speaking for you in the room, excuse me.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you.
Actually, sir, before you start, if I could, we're, we're having some audio issues today, so the volume on those testifying remotely is, is a little lower than usual, so if, I would just appreciate it if people in the room would be as quiet as possible so that we can hear everybody. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. So, Senator Fonfera, Representative Horn, and honorable members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee, I thank you for this opportunity to testify in opposition to House Bill 7264. My name is Rodney Moore, and I'm one of the chairs of the Criminal Legal Reform Team for Connect, congregations organized for newer Connecticut. Now, Connect is a broad-based organization of 37 congregations in New Haven and Fairfield Counties, representing 30,000 people that come together across racial, religious, economic, and urban and suburban lines to take action for change on our common interests and for the common good. Now, our Criminal Legal Reform Team pushed for the passage of Connecticut's Clean Slate Law, and we continue to press Lamont's administration to see that Clean Slate fully implemented and finally benefiting more than 170,000 people who were still waiting for the records to be erased as promised. And during our work with Clean Slate, along with the many stories that we've heard about how old criminal records have held people back from getting jobs and reduced them to become second-class citizens, we've heard a lot of other stories that were reoccurring, and one of those stories was how driver license suspensions also held many black people from getting jobs, getting a promotion, earning a wage that's decent enough for them to pay off their debts, and being able to pay the DMVs the $175 fee to get their license reinstated. Now, while we understand the goal of better collection of taxes owed in House Bill 7264, we basically vehemently oppose using driver's license suspensions as a tool in that effort. In fact, this session, Connect and a number of allies are supporting House Bill 7161, which was passed out of the Transportation Committee on March 19th, in an effort to limit the DMV and suspend a license only to violations or infractions which impact road safety. The financial impact of the suspension is substantial, and one study estimated that the annual earnings lost due to a suspended driver's license was about $12,700 annually per person. Now, due to this paradox, one Harvard Law School report called that driver's license suspensions among, is among the most pervasive poverty traps for, for people. Now, based on the 2022 state data, Connecticut had 389,000 licenses suspended, and at least 30% of all those suspensions due to failure to appear at a court date are concentrated in 10 Connecticut zip codes, which were all poor urban communities of color. In many cases, the ability to drive a car is basically essential to commute and to perform any, many, or, or most of the job. Now, while we understand the need for those, for the state to recruit more tax revenue, preventing a person from being able to make it to their place of employment will not allow them to earn what they need to live, let alone repay the debt. Now, 25 states around the country have taken action to address this poverty.
Three minutes, if you could please summarize.
Sure. Well, including New York, and in this time, Connecticut has to address the same issue, and we just believe that House Bill 7264 would take us backwards rather than forward in this effort, so we urge that you oppose this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. So I will click us off by, I represent a district where there is virtually no public transportation, so I hear you for, about the necessity for everybody to have access to, to, to a car, you know, to get to work, to take care of family, to take care of, you know, your, your, your needs, and that's certainly something we're concerned about. So if there, if, if we had some sort of limitation on the quantum of the, or the, the amount of the tax liability, would that change your view at all, or do you view this as any sort of impediment to getting a driver's license or losing a driver's license because of tax liability would be a problem?
I, I, I think any would be a problem, but if there's a way to, to ease it, or maybe find a way for them to work out a plan where it doesn't eliminate their license, then that can probably work.
Yes, certainly, we, I, I'll speak for myself here, we'd like to have some, this is for somebody who's made a good faith effort to set up a payment plan, that should, you know, that's what we're looking for, for people to be aware of that, so. We also, Senator Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Rodney, for your testimony. It's good to see you again, and I appreciate your advocacy and hard work on this, this matter, and as you mentioned, we had a bill before us in the Transportation Committee as well. We've taken great care this year to confine that to non-moving violations, but in recognition that there is an issue here that can be exacerbated by the suspension of a driver's license. If folks can't get to work, they cannot pay their bills, and so I think we need to be mindful of that as a committee moving forward, and I know both my co-chair, who is also on Finance, Revenue and Bonding and here with us today, feels the same way, and I think, as the good chairwoman of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee pointed out, I think we need to strike a balance. We want folks to be paying their taxes, certainly, but we also want people to be able to get themselves to work so that they can pay those taxes. So I just wonder if there's any suggestions you might have, recognizing where DRS might be coming from in this proposal? And, you know, we talked a little bit about payment plans, I know the good chairwoman mentioned, you know, is there perhaps a threshold that may be indicative of somebody that maybe has a little bit more financial security than somebody who owes a little bit less? I don't know, but I wonder if you, Rodney, have any suggestions for the committee here today?
Um, I mean, my only suggestion is that, like you said, I definitely agree that we all must definitely pay the taxes and, and, because that's just a given, but I think, like you said, there may be those who are fortunate enough to be able to handle certain fees more than others, but if there's a way where those that, where there, there's a certain fee, especially if it's not a road safety fee, and it's not going to cause them to basically get their license suspended, but still allow them to, to keep their license, but give them an actual, I'm going to say, timeline, and the timeline, it won't be a suspended of their license, but just to hold on the license until that particular payment is paid up.
Well, I thank you for that suggestion, and certainly, it's important for us to look at all considerations here and, and figure out. and figure out a a path forward. Um, but again, just appreciate your advocacy and thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And and my thanks to the good Chair of Transportation for that as well. And I just want to uh echo her comments that we are very interested in working together to resolve these issues to try to strike a good balance. Representative Farrar.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to the Chair. Uh, hi, Rodney. Thank you for being with us really. You today. I uh appreciated your testimony and wanted to ask a follow-up question mainly because as a committee, you know, we did get uh several months ago our state's first tax gap report. And I think one of the key findings there was uh as a state, how much we can do to uh really support our state in uh pulling in taxes that are owed. But one of the uh ways we can best do that potentially is through the use of uh greater auditors uh to focus their efforts and target their efforts uh most appropriately in the state. And I'm just kind of curious with your background and what you shared about other states, are there states that you are aware of that have established more of an installment plan model with the DMV, or are there states as well that we could learn from who have pursued this effort but then backtracked? I'm just kind of curious what you might know in that area for for us to be further educated.
Oh, great. Thank you. That that's a great question. And and one of the things that I definitely would love for you to collaborate with the other states because there are states who uh do this uh in a in a way that's really helping the state and also helping um the families and individuals so that no one's being left out. The the individual is able to keep the license, but also be able to still keep the job to take of his family, but through, I think it's through the employer, is where there some states are working through the employer to say, listen, it's just like um it uh like a child support deduction that they're working with the employer to say, hey, we can use you do a deduction from 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 your individual's pay to pay toward that where he's not losing his license, but it's actually coming out, but he's still getting, he's able to make his payments on time, which is actually better for that individual because it keeps him current with the payment and he doesn't have to worry about, or she doesn't have to worry about not or 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 maybe missing a payment so that those taxes can be done and they can keep their job.
Thank you for that. Thank you for providing that more thorough example and really appreciate your perspective on this. And thank you. If you have any further information on some of those other states you mentioned, please feel free to share it uh with uh for the full committee. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, committee, for allowing me to speak. Thank you again.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no further questions again, thanks for being with us today.
Thank you.
Next up, we have uh Will Herschel.
Uh, good morning, everyone, and thank you Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee for the opportunity to speak here today. Uh, my name is Will Herschel. Uh, I'm the CEO of Verge and a colleague of Joby Moss, who just spoke a few minutes ago. I'll be brief so as to not be redundant to my colleague's testimony. Uh, but again, commend this committee for taking up this issue of uniform capacity tax uh for solar solar projects throughout the state. This has been a long and arduous uh path with multiple uh studies completed by different administrative agencies here in the state. Uh, and I think that we're getting very close to a resolution of the inconsistencies and complexity associated with taxation of these uh projects throughout uh the state in a way that is going to be um fair and equitable across both uh development community as well as the municipalities that host these individual uh projects. Um, as Joby mentioned, we oppose unless amended this individual bill uh for the reasons that he articulated clearly. Um, and also support completely the OPM's written testimony. Uh, OPM being one of the administrative bodies that performed the studies uh on this matter uh on a number of occasions pursuant to previously passed legislation. Uh, with that, I would uh cede my time to see if there's any additional questions not already asked to my colleague Joby. Um, but wanted to provide an opportunity for this panel to ask any subsequent questions.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, thanks for being with us.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next up, we have Jeff Hinsky.
Here we go. Yeah, uh, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Very good. Uh, good afternoon. I guess she's still good morning. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to uh present uh present reviews. I'm Jeff Hinsky, the Vice President of Policy for Green Skies Clean Energy. Uh, Green Skies is a commercial industrial scale solar developer based in North Haven. Uh, we have over a hundred employees. The majority of them are based in Connecticut. So we are a strong local business and support uh a a lot of the state programs as well. Um, you know, in the last several years, our participation in both the NRES and SCEFF programs um has kind of brought some of these um uh property tax uh issues to to the forefront um that have been discussed in some of the OPM reports and and elsewhere. Um, we, as currently drafted, we would oppose HB seven-two-six-six. Um, there are a couple of key amendments that we believe are required to make this both a a workable solution and a fair solution for both the municipalities and the solar developers as well, streamline the process for both of us as well to get more solar built. Uh, the ba- three basic items we think that need to be addressed. Um, the uh uniform capacity tax needs to be forward-looking or only applied to future projects. Existing projects, operating projects already have uh, you know, a financial structure based around them, including in some cases pilot agreements with municipalities. So we wouldn't want to disturb any of any of those kind of arrangements. Um, we believe it's important to have a uh time limit or or sunset on the uniform capacity tax. Um, you know, broadly speaking, the uh these solar arrays or the the solar projects actually have declining revenues over time, and particularly once the state programs run their course, um, there's usually a significant drop in revenue. And while the uh solar arrays can continue to produce energy and provide support to the grid, um, they no longer are generating significant revenue. And so we believe, you know, as similar to the current regime, they're fundamentally fully depreciated, so the capacity tax should step down significantly or certainly uh be renegotiated with the municipality. Um, and then the third item is um the escalator should only apply, i- if you will, on a go-forward basis. The once your rate is fixed, it should be fixed for the full term for that particular project. And then if I have another project next year, that was when the escalator should apply. Um, you know, we shouldn't look at, you know, a individual project having an escalator, because as I mentioned, actually their revenues decline over time. They don't increase. So uh with those three um amendments or adjustments, I think then we can fully support this bill. And I appreciate your time and would uh be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, and I I I very much appreciate, we appreciate your um detailed, you know, thoughtful approach to this. We I I we have a lot of people who would like to improve the messy system of taxation that we currently have with respect to um solar energy. So um very much appreciate the detail that you've offered today. Any questions? Seeing none, thanks for being with us.
Yep, thank you very much.
Uh, next up, we have Alex Knopf.
Uh, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
We can.
Yes, thank you. Uh, distinguished chairs and members of the Finance Committee, in which I had the pleasure to serve for fifteen years, and special hello to my uh classmate in the House, Senator Fonfera. I I'm here to testify in support of House Bill seven-two-six-seven in act concerning the Fiscal Accountability Report. Uh, I think this uh fiscal accountability report produced by OFA is an extremely useful and comprehensive financial analysis uh about the impact of the guardrails, and I commend OFA for its excellent work. Unfortunately, the report is prepared according to a statutory methodology that produces a distortion in the report by mandating inclusion of the fiscal impact of fixed cost driver growth while mandating exclusion of the fiscal impact of non-fixed cost future growth for its general fund projections in future years. And what's a non-fixed cost? Well, that's generally certain appropriated funds. And the ones that concern me and the reason I'm testifying today in support is that these include most of the statutory grants that provide property tax relief in the budget. So what the bill essentially does is to create two classes of appropriated funds. One related to fixed costs and one related to discretionary non-fixed costs. And this means that when people are preparing their future budgets, the uh mandated fixed cost appropriations get a higher priority than things like non-fixed costs, which include property tax relief. So to me, the current methodology and statute uh discriminates against appropriated property tax relief and in favor of the uh fixed costs regarding things like payment of future uh pension debt. This is one example. I know you don't have it open there with you, but on page uh fifty-three of the uh fiscal accountability report from last year, it shows for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight that the amount of funds to be appropriated for tiered pilot, the motor vehicle tax and supplemental revenue sharing are all level funded for all of those four fiscal years, even though this is an impossible and implausible outcome. So the result is when you're looking at these out years, you will see growth in the fixed costs, but no growth by statute mandate in the non-fixed costs. As I say, I think this.
Three minutes, please summarize.
This creates a distorted picture. So uh I support the bill. I think it produces a more realistic and accurate picture of state finances. And I hope that uh OFA will also look at beefing up the sections on uh municipal aid instead of having them uh delegated to a appendix. So thank you very much for the chance to raise these issues.
Thank you, and we always appreciate when somebody te- shows up to testify about these very technical little issues that I think do really help us improve the big picture uh in our analysis. And I like you think the fiscal accountability report is super important. So thanks, um, Mr. Cochrane, Senator Fonfera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Alex, great to see you. I I just want to commend that um after leaving the legislature, becoming uh the mayor of Norwalk and leaving that position, you continue to provide uh us and Connecticut with your perspectives, your insight, um, which helps us greatly. And uh you could be doing a lot of things in your life, including the sport that you enjoy very much, golf, but uh you're here and you're continuing to provide us with help in making our job better, making the state of Connecticut better. I just want to recognize you for that and thank you.
That's very kind, John. Thank you. I just want to also acknowledge that when I was teaching at Yale Law School, a course called Legislative Advocacy, uh you met with uh me and my students several times to talk about the guardrails and property tax relief and other issues. I know that was very important to our students. And I really appreciate you're making the time to do that. And also, if I can, want to commend Representative Horn for her work last session to uh support legislation to create at least a municipal option homestead exemption. Because I think that, as my analysis shows, under the guardrails, it's difficult to increase appropriated funds for property tax relief sufficiently. We have to look at other mechanisms that don't involve appropriated funds, and the homestead exemption is one of those. And I think that was a Representative Horn, a big breakthrough for the state. And I thank you for your legislative support of that.
Uh, Representative Shinsky online.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say hi to my former colleague, Alex Knopf, and uh it's wonderful that you have the experience of the Finance Committee as well as being a mayor and that you can see the holes in the legislation very clearly because of your joint experi- your dual experiences. So thank you for staying active and thank you for your very careful comments on this legislation. Good to see you again.
Thank you, Mary. And I have uh uh looked back following in our service together and I'm uh extraordinarily proud of the length of your service. I think you're giving Cory Booker a run for his money here.
Thank you, Alex. See you another hearing.
Okay.
Uh, Representative Constantine.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, very appreciative of hearing your uh testimony, Mr. Knopf. Um, is there anything else that you think might be missing from this bill that you would recommend?
Uh, yes, thank you for the question. Um, I think quite frankly that the section and information about uh aid to municipalities needs to be uh reviewed and enhanced. I think there are things that are now included as municipal aid that really are not. For example, some of the aid to magnet schools uh is included as municipal aid, even though, for example, in the Chef versus O'Neill case, this is a state constitutional case that required the state to do a number of things. I serve as the plaintiff's representative in the Chef case since two thousand and twelve. And to call the money for uh uh magnet schools, for example, aid to municipalities, I think probably uh uh misstates that. And um uh, we don't really know from the report what the unmet need is in certain property tax statutory grants. And let me give you one example. So under the uh pilot program, uh the state is required to reimburse municipalities for lost property tax revenue in various classes, whether nonprofit hospitals, universities and state property. And there's a number for that. Um, the state, the legislature recently developed a uh program to uh rank uh reimbursements that were less than a full amount based on the property uh wealth of the municipality. But it doesn't say what the unmet need is. So for example, if there is a uh uh full reimbursement of, let's say, a hundred million, uh five hundred million dollars, and the state goes from three hundred million dollars one year to three hundred and fifty million dollars the next year, there is still a hundred and fifty million dollars of unmet need. But the report will show that there's been an increase of fifty million dollars. That's true, but that's only half the picture. Similarly, what you, the legislature did this year to add forty million dollars to the excess cost grant. All right, that was very good. Uh, municipalities need that support. But it's still left, I forget what the figure is, um, even more than that, in unmet need if you're going to fully fund the excess cost grant up to uh e- expenses above four hundred and fifty percent of the cost of an average student. Now, your report next year will show municipal aid increased by forty million dollars for the excess cost grant. That's good. But what is the unmet need that is not being funded? What have municipalities spent in excess cost uh uh costs that are not being reimbursed even though the statute requires them? So in other words, where the budget does not fund a statutory grant fully, I think the report ought to show what the deficit is that so that there's a more accurate picture. Because when you are under the guardrails, sending money to pay off uh future debt beyond the amount that is uh statutorily required, you are essentially making a policy choice that paying off that future debt is more important than funding the full excess cost grant or the full pilot grant or the full ECS grant. And I think that is one of the uh choices that ought to be shown up uh in the report. I've detailed some of those in a white paper I wrote two years ago with and in my testimony, I provide a a link to that. So I think those are some additional changes. Representative Constantine, I appreciate the question.
Uh, thank you so much, and I'd appreciate if you could send your report to us. And for all means, um, any other input you might have after this hearing? And for all means, any other input you might have after this hearing.
Thank you. I'm glad to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Representative Rader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Knapp, I just wanted to thank you for commenting on the funding around our public schools and the grants and what we're trying to do. Actually, this session in our Select Committee on Special Education to right that situation. But I agree with you, that information would be wholly beneficial to our work around this. And I wish we had done it sooner, but I really thank you for that recommendation. And much like my colleague, Representative Constantine, asked if you could forward us that information, that would be wonderful. So thank you.
And congratulations. I think the fact that the legislature both created a special committee on special education and commend Governor Lamont for providing additional funding, I think these are very important steps. Because as a former mayor, I can tell you obviously that with the federal government not meeting its fair share, municipalities are forced to shift funds out of both municipal budgets and the general education budget to funding special education, which we should do, but unfortunately, the finances of that need to be more transparent. So I congratulate you and your colleagues for the excellent work this year on highlighting the needs of special education students. And especially as the federal government continues to abdicate its role in abolishing a department. I mean, this is an outrageous step, and therefore, I think Connecticut is being very responsible in trying to step up and deal with these issues. So thank you very much. Appreciate it, Representative.
Thank you for your words. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thanks again for being with us.
I very appreciate your questions. Your attention very much.
And thank you prospectively for sharing your report with the committee.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Betsy Guerra.
Thank you, Representative Horn, Senator Fonfera, members of the committee. My name is Betsy Guerra. I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Council of Small Towns. We represent one hundred and fifteen smaller communities throughout Connecticut. And I'd like to speak on House Bill seven-two-six-six and act establishing a uniform capacity tax. This is an issue, as you know, that has been considered by the legislature for a number of years now. And it always ends up getting derailed primarily from our standpoint because of the impact or potential impact on property tax revenues. So our concern with establishing a uniform capacity tax has always been that the per-megawatt tax has to be sufficiently high to ensure that municipalities will not lose property tax revenues. You heard from Alex Knapp about some of the issues with municipal aid and the excess cost funding and property tax systems. We are heavily reliant in this state, as you know, on property taxes. And this year in particular, we've really got an earful from some of our towns about the impact of changes to how motor vehicles are assessed. And a newly enacted veterans' property tax exemption ended up affecting local grant lists. And so we have to be very careful that nothing in this, in establishing a uniform capacity tax, will erode those property tax revenues. Because as you again all know, we are reliant on those to fund critical services, services which, the cost of which are going up every single year. And so we do believe that a twelve thousand per megawatt tax is sufficient, although I would caution legislators that we need to ensure that this would in fact keep towns whole. We also support the provision of an escalator clause to ensure that as time goes on, that this is not a flat property tax exemption that again leaves towns scrambling to figure out how to pay for critical services. There are certainly other issues. I know the report prepared pursuant to Public Act twenty-four dash thirty-one does note that there's been a lack of uniformity and consistency into how the taxes have been applied on these solar systems. And we do need to address that. I am nervous, however, in listening to the testimony and in reading the testimony from the solar developers as to what they think would be a fair, uniform capacity tax I get. Because again, we need to be mindful of the impact on our local property tax revenues. So we're happy to continue the dialogue, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy, and thanks for being part of this conversation. You may have heard some testimony, both written and in person, or on, in-person testimony today from some of the developers about, for example, not having the tax be retroactive, but only future-looking. Do you have a thought on, does that change your position at all?
We do support efforts to ensure that the tax stabilization agreements that may have been negotiated prior to this being enacted would remain in place. And so I think that is something that we could certainly discuss. So we are open to that dialogue.
We've also had some questions about whether the tax should sunset after a certain period of time because of the, you know, the utility of the, the systems, you know, degrades over time. Do you have thought about that?
That is, that has been, has come up in discussions before, and certainly other personal property may be subject to depreciation schedules. So that, again, that is something that we can certainly discuss. Again, our whole bottom line is making sure that this would not end up undermining the property tax revenues that towns rely on.
Great, thank you. Representative Yaccarino.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Betsy. I have a couple of questions. So in a particular town, if a solar farm is developed, what do they approximately pay in taxes? And I don't like taxes, but I also don't want towns to be shorted.
Well, as the report points out, there's differences. So depending on if it's grid-scale solar PV system or not, there are differences. And then there have been differences over the years as to how these things are treated, which haven't really been reconciled in the statute. So we do support efforts that OPM points out in their testimony to try to reconcile that. But I can't give you a hard and fast number without going back and talking to some of our municipalities as to what they're paying. I will say there have been some instances where a solar developer, and I think they're limited, has tried to game the system by splitting up the system so that one piece of the PV system was on one parcel of property and another on a separate parcel of property so that they could avoid taxation altogether. And that has been a problem particularly in the southeastern part of the state and a few of our towns. So things like that need to be addressed. There are other issues pending before the legislature to give municipalities a greater voice in the sit-in council process to ensure that they don't impact environmentally sensitive lands or impose a disproportionate burden on certain rural communities. So those are other things that we need to address.
I appreciate that, because I think that happened in our town. One last question, Madam Chair. Personal property tax, like I have a business, I pay it on everything in my business. I have to by statute. Do they pay personal property tax on their, on their materials?
So what this would do would establish the twelve thousand per megawatt tax on the personal property. It, the real property upon which the system sits should still be subject to the property taxes in the municipality.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Piscopo, did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. My friend just asked the question. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your economy of words. Any further questions? Seeing none, thanks. Thanks again, Betsy, for being with us.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Randy Collins.
I think it's still good morning. Morning, members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Randy Collins, Associate Director of Public Policy for the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Wanted to speak on seven-two-six-six regarding the uniform solar capacity tax. Again, I think my comments are very much in line with what Betsy Guerra had just said. We think that this is a very good starting point for our conversation. We continue to work with the solar industry on trying to come up with an equitable solution. It's a complicated issue for our towns in the sense that we are wholly reliant on property taxation and going to a capacity tax. It's certainly a different, a different feature that we want to work through. We have had long conversations over the last few years. You know, and again, we're trying to see how we can come together, but we want to make sure that our municipalities remain whole. And looking at what that twelve thousand per megawatt number we think is a good starting point for us. And with the two percent escalator, I know we're continuing to have conversations of how that would be applied to existing projects, new projects. And I think that, as I said, I think we can come to an agreement on that piece. The bill has done a lot, alleviated some of our concerns that we'd had in the past regarding if, if an installation was delinquent. Our property tax collection statutes provide us priority liens, but that was based on property tax as opposed to a manufactured, you know, this type of tax. This does address that. So as I said, we continue to work in favor, trying to come to a solution with this. We appreciate the committee bringing this forward early in the session so that we can, you know, have those conversations and we're not kind of coming to a very, a verbal agreement with about three days remaining, I think where we were last year. So we thank you. I also want to comment on seven-two-six-five. They were establishing a working group on uniform energy storage capacity.
Thank you.
We'll never oppose the study. We're happy to sit there and sit down with, with the industry to see how we can work with them and efforts to bring in, as I said, energy storage. It's definitely a different animal. I mean, I think some of the concerns that we have is if we have a uniform capacity tax for solar and then the wind, fuel cell, and these, does it create a burden on municipalities of having multiple property, you know, multiple taxation systems? It's something like, we'd like to talk with our tax collectors about in terms of capacity. And just understanding, you know, I think the study would be beneficial to us to understand how they generate revenue, how that would, you know, how that would measure out, which has been a big issue with coming up with a uniform solar capacity tax. But we look forward to working with the industry and members of the committee and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. And I know, I mean, you've been in the room and you've heard that some of the solar developers have essentially focused their opposition to the solar bill on three things. The retroactivity, the wanting a sunset period, and some revisions to the escalator. Maybe, for example, as I think you already mentioned during your testimony, having it apply to new projects as opposed to over the term of an existing project. I think you've generally made comments that you think those are resolvable differences, but if you have any-
I mean, I think one of the, one of the aspects with the uniform capacity tax is when these developments go in, obviously, they have a very high upfront cost before depreciation. So the idea that uniform capacity would kind of flatten that out so they would pay less upfront, but stretch it out over a number of years. And so the municipality gets a little less upfront, but they'll get more on the backside. If we were to look at, well, phasing it out, it kind of defeats the purpose of lowering that upfront cost if we're going to phase it out at the back end. I think the idea was creating a uniform tax for the late, you know, the life of that project. So we'd have to talk with that industry of how that would, how that would work. You know, I mean, there are options that you could do with current, I know Fuel Cell of Bolchester recently, or within the last few years did a tax stabilization agreement, which is what some of our municipalities have done in bringing these in and is allowed some negotiation. The bill still does allow that to happen if you want to encourage development. You know, and we look at those as good options. And I think a few solid TSAs that are established can set the standard that other communities can work through. Again, the idea of a phase out, I think we'd have to sit down and look at what those numbers are and how they would impact, you know, price them out for different communities. Because there, you know, some communities have different needs. You know, and the impacts of a low mill rate town. You know, if you have a low mill rate, this could increase that cost. It might be a benefit. If you have a high mill rate town, you know, is there a lose, you know, are you on a decline on it? So it's something that, as I said, we look forward to working with the industry and we hopefully we can come to an agreement and not have to talk about it again in previous, in subsequent years, so.
Yes, that, I do appreciate really a lot of the substantive conversations that have gone on between representatives for the municipalities and the developers on this. And hope, I mean, I think as you've said, the aim here is to create some system of stability and predictability both for businesses in this field and the municipalities. Because there's been plenty examples of neither.
We're trying not to just say no, so.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Collins? Seeing none, thanks for joining us. Next up, we have Brendan Sharkey. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you, Chairman Fonfera, and other members, Representative Paletta, and other members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. For the record, my name is Brendan Sharkey. And I here representing VFS Energy Services for a particular reason, which I think the chairman just referred to, which is about stability and predictability in our tax, in the application of our taxes on renewable energy services. Let me explain why I'm here today. In, funny things happen in the private sector. I'm currently in the private world doing renewable energy work, but I also provide legal services to different renewable energy companies, including VFS Energy Services, whose testimony is you have in front of you. VFS is a national company that does renewable energy development around the country. And in Connecticut, they are particularly interested and involved in doing fuel cells. They have current projects at the University of Connecticut campuses all over the state. They also have contracts with the Winnipeg University, as well as other private projects, fuel cell projects that are using the, the class-one renewable status of fuel cells that we have here in Connecticut to participate in the SCEF program and the NRES program. So there's a particular project in Bridgeport that is a SCEF project that I have helped VFS in terms of providing some legal advice. And a question was raised by a third party who was interested in acquiring that project once it's built by VFS. And the question was, shouldn't the transaction involving the sale of the fuel cell to VFS for development purposes, is that a taxable event? For the purposes of the sales tax, the Connecticut sales tax. VFS has always taken the position, and I have agreed legally, that there is not a specific exemption in the statutes for fuel cells, even though we have explicit exemptions for the sale of solar, wind, other class-one renewables. However, fuel cells falls under a different statute that involves machinery involved in manufacturing. And for reasons that I think the testimony explains, it squarely falls into the definition of a machine used in manufacturing. It's taking one product, applying a chemical process, and creating a byproduct, which is electricity and heat. But the third-party financing company, who is ultimately going to buy this project from out of state, and they were like, well, we appreciate the fact that Connecticut might intend this and has always supported fuel cells. However, why don't they have the same exemption that solar and wind and geothermal and all the rest of them have? Why isn't-
You have reached your three minutes. If you could please summarize.
Why isn't it explicitly laid out in the statute? So that's the reason I'm here today, because that exemption for machinery used in manufacturing is what VFS is hanging its hat on right now. But it would be helpful if we could get some kind of clarification in the short term that that interpretation is correct. And secondly, that if we, maybe perhaps the committee as we go forward can look into this, as well as some of the other issues you've heard from today, about today, regarding the tax-
Once again, you have passed your three minutes.
Of renewable energy. I will finish my testimony.
Thank you. And I really appreciate you being here on that because I think the, of the two bills we have today, the energy storage bill, we're kind of in the process of defining what that business looks like. And I think your testimony is a part of that. In connection with that, the particular tax, sales tax issue that you've raised here, has DRS ever collected sales tax on these transactions that you're referring to?
No, not, they've not affirmatively sought the tax. But from my understanding is that some developers who have purchased a fuel cell, some have paid the tax voluntarily, some have not. And it has, as I've spoken to other developers of fuel cells, there's a little bit of nervousness now as to, well, should we have or shouldn't we have? I've had conversations with DRS about this topic, and it's a bit- And it's a bit murky, even in their own interpretation of the statute. I think the manufacturing. Qualification exemption is legitimate in their minds as well. But it has never, apparently not been presented to them in such a way, and they're not aggressively. Looking to collect that sales tax at this point, but I think everybody could benefit from some clarity on the topic.
Yeah, that's helpful, that there's at least not been an affirmative assertion of that tax liability. But perhaps not as much clarity as we might. Representative Rader.
Hi Brendan, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Well, this closer now my constituents.
Exactly, and I'm proud to do.
Just, I'm just doing a little research myself on fuel cells. What is the scale of cost typically? For a fuel cell, I'm just because if you're talking about. Sales tax revenue for it, what, what is it? Is there a typical scale or can it obviously vary greatly?
The fuel cell itself is in the multiple millions of dollars to acquire. And then there's the cost of installing it because it, as you can imagine. It, the feed of the fuel used to feed the fuel cell is a natural gas typically. And so there's a connection requirement there, and then the fuel cell has to be, then. The energy produced has to be connected out to the grid or to the local, wherever it's being applied or used, so. There's a lot to it. The project in Bridgeport that I referred to is a, is a multimillion dollar project.
So that's what I assume. And is, am I true, the other byproduct of this process is water? Is that it, there's no combustion involved, there's no, like in terms of environmental impact?
Correct. It's the only, the, the, the reality is that you're using. Even though it's considered a class one renewable. The fact that you're using natural gas to create the electricity and the heat. That is the byproduct of a fuel cell. Some have argued that that makes it not completely green because you're using a fossil fuel. To create that product. But it's been designated for years now as a class one because A, we wanted to promote the fuel cell industry, which is a home. Kind of a homegrown industry here in Connecticut, it has been for many years, but secondly, because. It's much more cleaner than the alternative.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Representative Butler online.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, former Mr. Speaker, for coming before us today. As you said. Fuel cells have been something that State of Connecticut has really. Developed and actually brought to the forefront and it's one of those things that is an added benefit to our energy. Solution, which we need to work on constantly. You spoke of how this is being looked at and it's not clear as to how it should be handled. Could you just share with us any suggestion that you think should be brought forward to? Be brought forward as a solution of how it should be handled?
Sure, thank you for that question. First, short term. For existing projects that are either in development or already constructed. An acknowledgement that, that the sales tax. Should not apply because these are in fact machines used in manufacturing, which has its own separate. Tax exemption under our existing statutes. So that acknowledgement, I think, would, would really be helpful to the industry and to investors in the industry. Longer term, the, any task forces that you consider for the uniform capacity tax on storage or other things. I think perhaps a holistic. Kind of looking, look at all renewable energy sources. Which has now evolved in the last 20 years since I first came to Hartford, to the legislature. All new technologies, very different. Means of. Developing renewable and clean energy have all emerged in the last 20 years, but our statutes really have not. Changed and with regard to taxes have not really changed to catch up with all of those advances, and I think perhaps. Perhaps if I could suggest the task force that you're thinking about in House Bill 7265. Might be expanded to look at. All taxes related to all renewables and perhaps come up with recommendations on how that can be accomplished.
Okay, well, thank you for your suggestion. Thank you for your testimony. It's good to see you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no further questions, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Uh, next up we have Sean Collins. Von Collins? No. Violet Haldane? No. Deandre Brown? Julian Boggs? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Rep. Horn, Senator von Farah, members of the committee. My name is Julian Boggs. I'm the State Policy Director. For Key Capture Energy. Here to speak on HB 7265. Key Capture Energy is a developer, owner and operator of utility scale battery energy storage systems. We have headquarters in Albany and energy storage facilities in operation in Texas and New York. Here in Connecticut, where we've been developing projects since 2016, 17. We have four projects that have permits from the Connecticut Siding Council. And hopeful to build these in the coming year. Have submitted more detailed written comments, just to summarize some of the key points here. Reducing the cost of battery energy storage systems reduces electric bills for homes and repairs. Utility scale battery energy storage, which is different than battery energy storage that has been deployed here in Connecticut, which has been. For, for individual customers at their homes and businesses. But utility scale, which is directly connected to the grid near a substation or high voltage line. That, that is revenue coming from an incentive from, from deep or pure or. From payments for services from, from utilities or from the wholesale market, and so. Our revenue is being paid in electric bills ultimately, and so. What is, what, what reduced the cost of battery energy storage systems reduces the cost of electric bills. A uniform capacity tax would provide important certainty for developers and communities. For developers, we can. Knowing the price, these are, these are long development projects, seven years, I think is quite common. Can be even longer. We can reduce the price of when we bid into competitive solicitations. If we know what the, what the property taxes are going to be, if we, if we don't. Then, or if we have to guess, or it's, you know, it's a negotiation with the tax stabilization agreement. Then we'll have to build in a, a risk premium into that bid. And then for the communities, they, they know what they're getting ahead of time when we're approaching them in the development process. A key point that I want to raise, I obviously, there's been a discussion here today about the solar capacity tax. We're talking, we can talk about a megawatt of storage and a megawatt of solar. We use the term megawatt because of, you know, electrical connection, it's a, it's a common denominator, but these are very, very different things. When you look at physically and, and they're, what the technology is and impact on the town or on the, on the, on the landscape. And most importantly, just the acreage requirements, a megawatt of energy storage is. Point zero five acres. You know, approximately, it can vary per site design, of course. As I think you heard some numbers on, on solar earlier today, but five to seven acres per megawatt is what I have from CEA. And so the, the impact on the, the town and the landscape from just the, the physical. Equipment is, is just dramatically different, it's about a percent. And then finally, before I wrap up, just very quickly, I want to emphasize the urgency and. And, and Key Capture Energy recommends that actually that this legislation.
If you could please summarize, you had your three minutes.
To implement something this year, because. As I mentioned, we just have four projects permitted, we're only now at the moment where we can actually get ahead of this. And not have to deal with any of the kind of the retroactivity grandfathering issues you're seeing now with this, with, in the discussions around the solar tax. So happy to conclude right there and take any questions from the committee.
Thank you. I think you've, I was, I'm glad you highlighted the distinctions between. Solar and energy storage, because I think I was personally, the reason that, that we're doing kind of both at the same time, even though there obviously been many more conversations in the solar. Area than there have been in energy storage is to think about these issues holistically and maybe to your point, get ahead of some of this. Mess that's been created with respect to solar. And then I, so I, if you could just elaborate a little on your, your point about the size, like the physical size of these, I mean, with respect to the. The solar capacity tax, we are separating real property from, from. Per, you know, physical property. So if you, I mean, is there, does that mean there's a different threshold here or a different, is that about the pricing or what impact do you think that, that size differential has?
Well, with respect to, you know, we would, we would anticipate that any capacity tax for. Storage would, would also have that, you know, that we would continue to pay real property tax and that the capacity tax would replace personal property tax. And so the real property tax, you know, presumably. You know, we're, we're also, I should say, another difference is that we're citing generally on different types of land, we're citing on usually industrial. Zone land close to utility substations as opposed to, a lot of times it seems like farmland for, for solar, and so. I assume that's going to have different property tax. Underlying real, real estate, so, so that's going to be, we're, you know, going to pay much smaller per, you know, much smaller acreage on a real property tax. And then the, so yeah, the uniform property, the dollar per megawatt, I would think. I mean, we certainly believe should be different than the dollar per megawatt for solar. One, because of that land impact, but two, because the economics of a megawatt of. Storage are entirely different than a megawatt of solar. You know, a, a large part of our economics is, you know, we withdraw energy from the grid when there's too much during the middle of the night and, and, and put it back onto the grid. When it's most needed, 4:00 PM in the afternoon in the summer, 11:00 AM in the, in the, in the winter when, when demand is high. So we have to buy our energy as well as sell it. The solar energy is just selling. And so the, the economics of, of a megawatt are entirely different, so I. Hopefully that answered your question, I.
Yes, thank you. And then. If we, you know, create a working group to try to address this issue as is contemplated by the proposal. Any particular stakeholders or perspectives that you would suggest that we make sure are included in that conversation?
You know, certainly the usual suspects, deep and pure who are contemplating programs of their own. I, I, I. You know, industry trade associations that it can represent, you know, a, a number of voices like our own. I, I will say that I, I fear that if there is a working group created, we will be in the, in the same position that we are now coming back here, except the only difference will, that. Several towns will have likely signed tax stabilization agreements and, you know, need to unwind or, you know, figure out how to manage that. And, and, and projects will have bid on, in solicitations from pure and, and potentially from deep, which has done one solicitation and has said they want to do more. Between now and then, so, you know, it's, it's taken a number of years from solar and the conversations seem. You know, similar to what they've been in the past, so that's what I would fear if, if we don't take action this year.
Thank you. Any further questions? Senator Honig.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Boggs, for being here and testifying. You had. You know, drawn a distinction between solar. And battery energy storage with respect to. Kind of the business model and the kind of impact on the, you know, different amounts of land. Can you also talk about? Differences like in other impacts, like I know there's a lot of concern. In some communities around banner, battery energy storage with regard to how it affects emergency services. And things like that, additional burdens on municipalities to deal with potential emergencies. From battery energy storage. So could you comment on that?
Sure, yeah, happy to. I, you know, I, the first thing I want to say is like. Like solar. Battery storage does not produce emissions, you know, it's an emissions free technology, it's just storing electricity from the grid and, and dispatching energy. And, you know, we. You know, in terms of other impact on the community. That's, you know, it's, it's a, it's an incredibly low impact. Technology, certainly emergency services and, and, you know, I think there have been concerns about battery energy storage safety. My company and certainly best practices. Across the industry is to. Proactively reach out to firefighters and local first responders in every community we, we work in. We have an emergency response plan that we develop in partnership. With those, the fire, local firefighters and, and first responders, and so that they always have a clear understanding of what. What, what the technology is and the best way to respond. And, 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 and that has really been the, 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 the biggest gap is, is, you know, for them to be able to understand their, their role and, and, and the communication that we've had to date. Once they understand that, once they understand, okay, this is, you know, this is what the technology is. These are the, the, the key things to do and not to do. Our experience has, has, you know, and, and from them too, is that there's not like a. You know, an, an, an increased need for community investment in those. You know, in those. Services other than what they would already have otherwise.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, you know, the idea of a, I guess a fire with one of these things is a pretty rare event, so. Most likely you would never have to deal with it, but I know a lot of communities are concerned that. Well, if they do have to deal with it, do they have the staffing? And the emergency services capabilities to deal with that in that unlikely event? And, you know, do you think that the, you know, the taxation regime should kind of reflect making sure that. Municipalities do feel like they have the resources to deal with an emergency?
Yeah, again, I, I think the most important thing that we can do for them is to walk them through that emergency response plan. So that we're saying, so that, so, and this is, you know, the, the developer should pay for this and does pay for this, this, you know, the. The, the, the training and the production of the, of the emergency response plan, and so that they understand. You know, what they, what, what they need and they don't, so they, they know, okay, we actually, we actually don't have to, you know. Get a new fire truck that's just going to sit there 365 days a year, or, you know, we don't have to do that, I, you know, in, in some towns with, you know, yeah, it, it, it just. It's, it, I guess it's an issue of town by town, you know, walking them through and, and, and explaining the resources to this, I, I guess I. I, I, I can't think of an instance where, you know, there has been. Certainly in, in, in places where in New York and Texas and where we've worked and where the battery energy storage is quite developed in places like California. That there has been a, a uniform. Or, you know, a need for additional capacity on the emergency response side, it, it, it's really an issue of. Of, again, that firefighter, first responder, and then, you know, I should say absolutely, you know, codes and standards. On, for us as, as energy, uh, uh, energy storage developers to make sure that. And, and so, you know, one of the things about battery energy storage systems as opposed to other lithium ion. Technologies like e-bikes and, and things like that, as we have an extremely rigorous. Safety standards and, and protocols, national industry codes, the national electric code, the fire code. Most importantly, the National Fire Protection Association Standard 855. That governs things like citing setback, the safety equipment and design of the battery energy storage systems to prevent these. From, from ever catching fire or having other safety events in the first place, and so it's, it's really. Making sure that those standards are in place and that those are enforced and that is done in Connecticut at the Connecticut Siding Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Piscopo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony. My question goes to you, you have four, you have four approved by the Siding Council. My question goes to you, you have four, you have four approved by the Siding Council now for these facilities. What what taxes are you subject to right now if this bill doesn't go anywhere? Like, what 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 local taxes are you subject to right now?
Yeah, so we would, in each town, we would figure out, you know, and my understanding is it varies on town whether or not they have to, you know, the exact process that they go through, but you would ultimately, the town would have a tax stabilization agreement for the battery storage system. So it would vary quite a bit in each of the four for projects that we have. They would be based on an assessed value that was determined by, you know, by an assessor and and of course, the local village.
I don't know, I don't know if I understood your testimony about trying to cite it in an industrial spot. I I I see some of your proposals out in rural areas. Is there some misunderstanding there with your testimony and and where you're actually citing them?
Sure, yeah, I just, you know, industrial zoning and is 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 what I guess I referred to and, you know, and places near power lines and in other industrial equipment. I I largely just meant it in in contrast to solar, which is generally built on farmland, this is a generally different type of use for the most part.
Your source of energy, you 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 cite it near a near the their transmission line. So you pretty much charge your batteries off the grid and then when needed, you sell it back.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you, thank you for your testimony, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Being no further questions, again, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
We will circle back to Violet Haldane, who I think is online now.
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Violet Haldane and I'm a resident of Hartford. I, uh, dear members of the Finance Committee, I am writing to express my opposition to section three of House Bill seven two six four, which proposes that the DMV enter into agreement to withhold the issuance or renewal of motor vehicle operator licenses and registrations for individuals who owe taxes, penalties, or interest to the state. While the intent behind this proposal may be to address outstanding state debt, I believe the potential consequences would disproportionately harm low income and vulnerable populations. And I urge you to consider its implications. The primary mission of the DMV is to promote public safety, security, and service through the regulation of drivers and their vehicles. It should not be an agent of the state for tax collection. When did the DMV become the de facto enforcement arm of the state's fiscal policy? DMV's primary role should be about maintaining public safety on the roads, ensuring drivers are qualified and vehicles are safe, as many of our colleagues like to say. Expanding additional revenue collection responsibilities would be an improper expansion of this role and could lead to unintended consequences for individuals and families. This policy would disproportionately impact those with financial limited needs. Most people who owe taxes, penalties, or interest to the state are already struggling to make ends meet. For those individuals, losing their ability to drive could have severe consequences. Not only could it hinder their ability to commute to work, it could also lead to loss of housing, access to healthcare, and the ability to meet basic needs. The consequences of such policy would ripple out, compounding the existing hardships many residents face and effectively punishing the very people who are most vulnerable. By penalizing those who are struggling, we would make it harder for individuals to get back on their feet. The goal should not be to penalize people who are already under financial strain, but rather to help them gain stability and contribute to the state's well-being. By taking away their ability to work and fulfill daily obligations, this proposal could lead to long-term social and economic harm for many individuals and families. We should look for creative and compassionate support to solutions to support those in need. There are alternative ways to increase state revenue, such as expanding, expanding programs that incentivize tax payments, offering manageable repayment plans, and even introducing measures that encourage financial literacy and help reduce individuals reduce their outstanding balances. We should focus on empowering individuals to pay their bills rather than making it harder for them to do so. At a minimum, if the state is determined to pursue this approach, it could simultaneously
If you have three minutes, could please summarize?
To, who are struggling to pay their taxes, we need solutions that will help people. So please reconsider the positions of this act, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for joining us on that. We've had a lot of conversations today about how to make sure that we address, you know, the strike the right balance between collecting revenue that, of course, helps the state address the concerns of a lot of Connecticut residents, but also not penalizing people. And and of course, having access to a car often is the equivalent of having access to a job and caring for your family, et cetera. So I appreciate trying to strike the right balance. Representative Constantine.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Haldane, it's very informative. Your testimony is very informative and segues well with Randy Morris from Connecticut Connect. You know, we were discussing kind of solutions or you mentioned some of them regarding low income population. I have a question for you. Would, on the driver's license side, would not allowing a real ID but just a regular driver's license, what would you think of that idea?
Of letting people have their, keep their driver's license even though they owe taxes?
Yes, but they wouldn't be able to have a real ID driver's license.
I'm not really opposed to that, I I'm just concerned that people should have that your driver's license should not be the thing taken away if you owe taxes. I thought drive, your driver's license is to show that you can, you understand the rules of the road and that's the purpose of it. And it seems that taking away people's driver's license has become a way for the state to collect funding. It seems as though DMV has become the collection agency for the state. And that's my concern, that so many things now impact you having a driver's license that has nothing to do with driving. But for a real ID, you know, I'm not opposed, I really haven't thought about it. But I I'm just concerned about people being able to work. But many people who have a driver's license, like the C D L drivers, et cetera, they do have to travel interstate, but yeah, they're not getting on a plane, so I guess it really doesn't matter. So, yeah, I guess I'm not opposed if it doesn't impact, as long as the driver's license stays in place. You know, the real ID, I'm okay with for now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative. Any more questions? Being none, again, thanks for joining us today.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have Jeff Gentis. Is it different, we got the name wrong? Mr. Gentis with us? Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you, welcome.
Good, I'm sorry, I was, you skipped a couple and I wasn't quite ready. My name is Jeff Gentis, I'm a lawyer who works with homeowners facing foreclosure to other people facing financial distress. So I want to thank Senator Fonfera, Representative Horn, Senator Fazio, Representative Paletta for allowing me to testify today. I am, I submitted written testimony and I'll submit it, I'll summarize it briefly. It is on the House Bill seventy-two sixty-four, the D R S bill. And I want to speak specifically to sections one and four. Section one would allow the state to hire private debt collectors to collect state tax debt. We have seen that in our practice from municipalities who are able to hire private debt tax collectors to collect property tax debt. And the issue is that our state debt collection laws primarily, and federal debt collection laws primarily focus on consumer debt as opposed to tax debt. And so we give the government all these extra powers and exemptions in order to collect its own taxes. But the problem is when you sign it off to private debt collectors, they get to step in the state shoes in terms of the exemptions because they're collecting tax debt. And so without further amending the debt collection laws so that private tax, private debt collectors would be subject to the normal debt collection laws when they're collecting state tax debt, we could see some of the abuses that we've seen with homeowners who are facing foreclosure and don't get, you know, basic information, basic service from these private entities. And section four references that, you know, we give the state all these extra powers and all these extra powers that that can be used to abuse. Section four, the notion of refusing to issue or renew driver's licenses for people who are behind on their tax debt, that's not going to affect the financiers who are in prison and owe the state money. It's not going to affect the estates of people who died and owed the state tax money. That's going to affect poor working class people, people who are usually small business owners whose whose businesses have failed or who have run into some kind of trouble. And now then taking away their ability to earn by taking away their licenses, that's just a punitive measure for us and it's just not going to help with the actual tax collection. So for that reason, we're opposed to oppose the bill. That being said, we're happy to work with the committee on on ways to make it better. With that, thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. We've had some conversations today about the driver's license part of this, in particular about, you know, finding a way to strike the right balance here so we don't penalize people and in fact, make it harder for them to pay their taxes. But I wondered whether you had a had a chance to hear any of the testimony about, for example, someone who, you know, has made a good faith effort to enter into a payment plan, no problem. Or someone who you you get a, you know, a standard driver's license but not a real ID. You had any comments on that?
I unfortunately have been in meetings, I'm actually like in a meeting right now and I jumped on for this really abusing on my end, the the remote testimony and and not being present with you to hear the prior testimony. I did read the submitted testimony and I saw the comments from the Commissioner of the DMV and a few of the other other folks, I just haven't heard the oral testimony yet today. So I apologize.
But I mean, just with respect to that, if we were to address the the particularly the driver's license aspect of this in order to ensure that people who have made a good faith effort to, you know, have a payment plan of some kind, not subject to this, or for example, somebody who owes, has a tax liability, isn't eligible to get a real ID but can get their, you know, their actual, you know, a workable driver's license is fine. I just wonder if you had any, any thoughts on those sort of ameliorations of the severity of this?
Yeah, you know, and maybe I should say, I think it's easier to work around section one than it is section four for us. There's just so many different ways that exemptions and both exemptions and punitive measures just disproportionately affect our clientele that I just, I don't know if I can get there on driver's licenses. It's when we talk to people, I've yet to meet anybody who owes taxes, who's like, you know, I'll I'll see you in hell type of aspect to it, like they're 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 struggling to try to figure out some way to make it work. And a lot of times it's people who've made two or three mistakes in their life. And I think we've all made two or three financial mistakes in your life and they've just compounded in ways that have been hard to control. And then when you owe the government money, you're facing it on all ends and I I just think the driver's license aspect to it, I don't know that there's a way to identify the sort of, you know, apocryphal or, you know, there probably are a handful of people who really don't want to pay the state money and maybe are, you know, worthy of suspending their driver's license, but by and large, that's just not, that's not the best way to go.
I agree, and that's certainly not the aim of this legislation to to make peoples, you know, who are having or struggling to pay their tax liability, make it worse for them, we're we're just trying to, you know, draw attention and collect the taxes that that are due to the state. So let me go back to the the first, the section about collecting, enabling D R S to collect out of state debt. There have, you know, there's some open question as to whether or not the, you know, Attorney General's Office has has the ability to do this or the authority and or the ability to do this. Would your testimony be different if we involved the Attorney General's Office in this or enabled them or made it clear that they can participate in the collection of this out of state debt?
It's better than the private market, for sure. And yeah, I mean, we would deal with I'm trying to say this fairly, I just, I should also just preface, I view this as being like something that's coming from D R S and not something that's coming from necessarily. I I view this as like, you know, sort of the D R S is looking for, so I feel like I'm I'm arguing to them.
What this legislative committee has proposed, not what these are not among the proposals they put in front of us.
Okay, good, okay, thank you, that's helpful. I think having the A G's office is is fine if you want to deploy their resources. My impression of the A G's office is that they are, they don't have a lot of slack capacity. And so they it may take additional personnel, but given, you know, perhaps the rate of return on what it takes to hire an attorney and what it what they could could do in collection, an attorney or other investigator to do debt collection, that makes some sense. I I'm only, the other thing that's given me pause is we have dealt with people at the A G's office who who maybe don't have maybe sympathies, not on their top ten lists, top ten qualities that they bring to the table. And and there's some aspects of of their office where people can sort of end up operating their own, you know, fiefdoms in the same way that with one hundred and sixty-nine municipalities, some tax collectors are better than others, right? But I think that, you know, Attorney General's Office is certainly preferable to private, private market for sure. Because there it's just, it's profit driven, it's not, it's a lot less of the, you know, you're not in public service in that way.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Gentis? Seeing none? Thanks for joining us.
All right, then thanks for your patience with my my signing up.
Please, we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who's on our list who's hasn't been called? There is someone? No. Okay. I think we are finished with the public hearing then, thanks to everyone for joining us and we are adjourned.